To the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, infinite law, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, welcome everybody. I'd like the Secretary of Treasury to pull the roll, please.
William Parish.
Present.
Ann Walker.
Here.
Will J. Warner Jr.
Edward J. Warner Jr.
Edward J.
Edward J.
He is here.
That's his cousin.
Um, William Pellis here.
This is K.A.
Scott Howard, President.
Here. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to our Monday, December 4th, 2023, 9:30 a.m. Work session. Um, we'll get right down to business. I see we got a lot of people here. Waterfall Hockin location permit applications for determination. Hello, Lisa.
Hello, whoever you want to be.
Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning, Lisa.
You had a nice weekend?
It's raining.
First one is Michael D. Perte, permit 240. He did bring in a letter of explanation, and I sent it to Rich. Rich said, "All looks good," um, pending your approval.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm good with it.
I spoke to him on the phone.
That's an advance.
All good? Okay. And then we have Finn A. Kelly and Kenneth A. Booth Jr. Um, I sent this to Rich, and he claimed that Mr. Booth had, um, been asked to be taken off his, this permit last year, but we couldn't find any back emails or anything, so we asked him to send again. He did send us an email stating that he no longer wanted to be a co-permitty, and he was giving the per, uh, the blind to Finn Kelly.
Mr. Booth.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Booth.
Sent that to Rich. Rich was fine with that.
Okay.
Mr. Booth, yeah.
So we saw.
I called Mr. Booth.
We saw the guidelines.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so advance it.
Okay, and then Craig L. Doon. No?
No. Richard K. Corwin.
Oh, I'm sorry, Richard, yes. Uh, he is surrendering his spot to the, back to the waitlist. He no longer wishes to, um, use that blind. Uh, I sent that to Richard. He, he also quite said that was fine as long as it goes back to the waitlist.
Where is that spot, James?
Um, one, it's 199.
We'll take it.
If it's...
Inside of Clem Island?
Hmm.
Noriah.
I don't.
No way. Well, that's what he has up there, so it's, yeah.
Yeah.
So how many, um, people are on the waitlist?
Right now, 102.
102.
We got to, I believe, number 27. Um, that was just last week, and he did take a blind.
Okay, good.
Everybody moves up one, so 101.
Good.
Once he's approved.
Craig L. Doon, permit 104.
Yep. We received nothing from Mr. Doon. No email, no application. It's up to you guys what you want to do. Do you want to put it back to the waitlist? Do you want to take it from him? Do you want to give him time?
Go to the waitlist.
I mean, I haven't, I've called the other three gentlemen, but I have not called, though, Mr. Doon.
Yeah.
Do you want me to, do you want me to?
You want to give him a call?
I'll give him a call and...
Give him one shot, and then it goes back to the waitlist.
We'll hold it.
After the meeting, I'll get the number, and I'll give him a call and, uh...
Okay.
See what, see what's going on.
And that's the next step? Okay, so we're gonna give him a hold on that.
Yeah.
For one, uh, session here.
Okay, and the next one is Jonathan Corwin. He was taken from the waitlist. He has no other blinds. Um, he chose permit 272. Um, and Rich, all his paperwork was in. He's good.
So, so good.
Advance that.
Advance it? Okay. And then permit number 256, Sean Kilfoyle. Received nothing from him either. Uh, no, no letter, no...
Let me give, let me try to give him a call after the meeting. We're on the break.
Okay.
Okay, so that, it's a hold just for one session, and it's going back to the waitlist.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, and Alexander Nega, Negonovitz, also. We received nothing, permit 269.
Let's hold him also till the next meeting.
Okay.
One session, that's it. If they're not, um, if there's no disposition by the next session, those are going back.
Okay. All right, that's it for me.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Lisa, could you give me the numbers for them?
Yep, I'll have them for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, let's get into the general firm applications for determination. We have Trustee Pell.
Iconic Marina, 1109 Noriah Woods.
This is JMO here.
We received an email from them. They cannot make it today, either the owner or the agent.
Hold it over.
So nobody can make it today?
They request to hold it.
They want to hold it, so we will grant their request. Next one, we have Vincenzo Asta, 27 Lighthouse Road, Hampton Bays, and Consultants.
Hey, Rob.
Morning.
Morning, Rob.
How is everybody?
Good.
Besides Ed.
I'm here, I'm good.
Yeah, he's a lot.
That's plain wrong.
I was testing to see if he knows anything.
It was a cognitive test. On the road to recovery.
Tough as nails. Tough as nails, my buddy over here.
All right, so this is the Asta application. This is in Ed's area.
Yes.
Gave Ed a little taste of what's gonna happen if this doesn't get advanced.
Okay.
This is...
Tough crowd here today.
So this is a, um, is a bulkhead that, uh, for part of it is in pretty bad shape. Um, it got hit with a couple of different storms. This is not, uh, super recent. This is within the past few years. Um, the family has not, uh, been in a position to pursue applications to, uh, replace, reconstruct the bulkhead, and, uh, they now are. And so we have the application before you basically to replace, uh, the existing bulkhead in its existing configuration. This is a property that is adjacent to the U.S. Coast Guard Station right off the side of the bridge. Um, and there, there is no, uh, proposal to raise the height of the bulkhead higher than the highest height of the existing bulkhead. So I had talked, uh, with James and Ed about this. We were trying to get the, the wording in a way that made sense, but basically, um, the highest, the highest elevation, uh, which is 5.5 NAVD of the existing bulkhead is the highest elevation that the reconstructed bulkhead would be. There are some sections that are sagged that are, that are lower, whatever, so those sections would be raised in height basically to meet the height of the rest of the bulkhead, uh, as it exists now. Um, Ed, of course, is most important on the south side, uh, of the property where, uh, mean high water is located closest to the swimming pool and deck associated with the residential, uh, structures on the property. There is a proposal to, uh, restore, uh, the fill behind the new bulkhead. Um, there's a 10 to 40-foot wide eroded area that would be backfilled. Um, and then at least a 10-foot wide area behind the bulkhead, which would be the area that the board would typically require for a non-turf buffer, uh, would be planted. Yeah, it's gonna be backfilled in clean sand and planted with Cape American beach grass. Um, the reality is they'll probably plant more than that, but, but relative to the board's permit and concern for that ton-foot buffer, uh, that is, that would be a vegetated buffer.
Yeah, because where our jurisdiction is the high tide, and the high tide is substantially behind the bulkhead, so I'd like to see as large a buffer as we could possibly, as you could possibly offer up, or they would offer up, because, you know, this is a, you know, a very large piece of property on Schinacock Bay, and, uh, you know, the water quality in the bay has gotten better over the years, so we want to make sure as much vegetation can be put in that area, you know, to whick up any, uh, you know, nutrients that come off the property.
Yeah.
Um, so being, I, I think that's one of the, you know, concessions that we could work with and see if there would be amenable to it. Um, and also, the bulkhead, I know the area, and the bulkhead has been put in, in a couple stages, so you're siding the highest point of the bulkhead that's currently there, and it would be all consistent all the way around.
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've been on site, and I'm familiar with it. I think it'd be consistent with what we have done in previous, you know...
You have state permits for this one already?
I'm sorry?
State, or planning this one?
No, not yet. Um, we had actually tried to see if, to just expedite things to see if we could get a general permit from the state, but because of the condition of part of the bulkhead, they can't do it as a general permit, so they've asked us to submit it as a, a standard five-year title wetland permit application, which we're in the process of.
And it would be consistent with some of the other properties along this beach where the state had given permits where the bulkhead had become somewhat dysfunctional. So, I'm not, which I'm familiar with, I believe it's Whites Lane. There was a bulkhead just north of that that was similar to what this looks like. And this all happened during the storm last year, about a...
Christmas storm?
Christmas storm. Most of that bulkhead was, was, was there in a much better, uh, you know, much more sound way, but that storm really decimated what was, who was there.
Yeah, the first time they asked me to look at it, uh, it had been damaged, um, but not to the extent that it, that it has been since.
Yeah.
And then you don't realize how well it's functioning even in, in that condition until you remove it, and then the disaster occurs.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's the concern.
Moving forward, one of the concessions I'd like our board to put on there is to have all the, the concrete that's seaward of their property along the facing of the bulkhead, to have that all removed, because there was a, there was a bulkheads, the bulkhead previously back in the 50s and, you know, 40s and 50s was just a concrete wall, and it's all somewhat has ended up into the, uh, you know, on our beach there.
So you're talking about the area that's on the outside?
Yes.
Of the bulkhead? Yeah, I know.
Clean up the beach.
I mean, I think they would probably...
It would benefit them, and it would benefit the public that walks the beach along its area.
I don't, I don't see that as an issue, Ed.
Okay.
Can you put that on the cover sheet?
Wouldn't this be a condition of the permit, or?
Well, I'd like to have it on the cover sheet because, you know...
The way it gets done.
Well, we're transitioning. We had a dock inspector. He has now left us, and the future dock inspector, I'd like to have everything right on the front sheet, so when they go down and do the, uh...
Understood.
Compliance, you know, review, that everything is in hand, and everything that has been discussed and has been, you know, is there, so it's easier for everybody.
Right.
That's fine, Jim.
It won't hold up anything?
No, no, I'm not.
It's just clearer for us, especially...
No, we've done, we've done this before in, in many properties.
Still waiting on the state anyway.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, I just, I just want to make sure that I...
And I think the state would be agreeable to what we're doing here, too, and I know we have in other projects. So we want to move that ahead just with the change in language on the cover sheet?
What, she want to go another round with Rob?
No, I'm good.
And we'd have to give you engineer...
Of course.
Stand plans.
Of course.
Yeah.
We give it to you. Do you want me to make a notation by the concrete on the plan as well?
Yes.
I think you should.
Yes.
Be as clear as possible.
Not a problem.
Because I, I believe when we have our new dock inspector, I'm gonna, we're gonna ask him to go down and go down through a series of bulkhead replacements, not just when it's completely done. I'd like to see him go down when they're, it's tearing it out, putting the dead men, lay logs, so engineering-wise, that that person has an understanding of how a bulkhead function and works.
Sounds good.
Okay. So we're good? James?
Yep.
All right.
Do you have anything else, Rob?
I don't. Getting us out, I hope you do feel better.
Yeah, working on it.
Done with me?
Yep.
That's all you got.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Rob.
Green Harbor.
12 Green Street, Green Harbor LLC, Village of Psych Harbor, Thomas Johann.
Morning.
Just, can you just sign in and give us the contact information?
State your name for the record, too, please.
Uh, Thomas Johann.
Do you want to explain the project, Mr. Johann?
Um, we applied for permit, we received it, built the dock. We had trouble with some of the boards on the floating dock. We asked them to replace it, and this happened, uh, a year ago. They replaced the boards. Unfortunately, they came and they took the floating dock away. So when I called the dock guy, he was out of the country already for his winter vacation, and he said, "When I come back, you'll have to pay a small fee, but the dock is done." So it was kind of too late to get it. He brought the dock back, the floating dock, in April. We were past our limit, and so we're applying for a new permit to have it inspected.
Oh, so you were past the time limit, not the size limit?
Yeah, just the time limit.
Okay.
James, do you want to weigh in on this a little?
Giving the, with the, um, couple months lead time? How mu, how far?
Well, we...
How far, how many months?
Our permit had expired in the end of September.
Oh, so it's like six months?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to reapply.
Yeah. So we reapplied.
But James, do you want to weigh in on this a little?
For what?
Well, the survey that we have, the plans that we have, um, the dock wasn't built in the area. It doesn't coincide, so the, the plans that we have show the dock on the west side of the property, and you were, on, on a site visit, it was built in the middle of the property.
Yeah, more to the side. It was moved by, Dana had done the initial application.
So it's not in this spot that we permitted it? And you moved it over there? How far is that off the property line?
So...
Eight feet? That, that...
That's not a compliance.
That's gotta be moved. That's not gonna work.
No, it needs to be 10 feet off the property line.
This needs to go back to where we originally permitted this.
Well, I'm gonna have to get the, the people who put in the initial application, because on our survey and what we got from them is where we put it. It was survey...
But what, what does our permit say?
Ann has a copy of it right here, and it clearly is much different than what was...
So there's two different...
Yeah, but this is the...
Where's the approved?
This is the approved plan here.
Okay, so that's way off.
Oh, and this is what was built.
Okay, so this is not gonna work. That cannot work.
It's only eight feet off the extended property line, so...
It's, it's completely wrong.
So the dock, well, they built it in the wrong place.
Yeah.
Did you see the survey, too? Please?
That's, that should be adequate. Yeah, it would be like building a, coming in for a building permit for a house and putting it, instead of 10 feet off the property line, putting it eight feet off the property line, where you have meets and bounds.
Sir, this is not gonna work.
Yeah.
Oh, it's gonna have to move it.
Okay.
This is not gonna work.
I mean, who gave him permission? Did you give him permission to put it there?
Well, the surveyors came and surveyed it, saying this was where it was changed to from the initial, initially when it was proposed, like four years ago, it was on the...
We would have never approved that.
The north side, yeah.
There's no way.
This is the initial one. This is the one we did the review over. This is the one that we permitted.
And the sort of survey mistakes are incorrect, you're saying?
Yeah, they looked at the wrong, they should have looked at the up-to-date permit. They might have looked at a whole survey.
You, you need to have a huddle with your design professionals and construction engineers, because this is not gonna pass. You can't stand.
Yeah.
Mark?
Yeah, Section 50, the blue book, and it does clearly state it has to be 10, at least 10 feet away from the neighbor's property line, unfortunately for Mr. Johann.
Well, not on, even, aside from that, it has to be where we permit it to be, regardless.
Yeah.
So it's not gonna, there's no way we can...
No, you know, we just hired the surveyors to come in and use what they were given by the people who did the original environmental application. That's what they gave the surveyors.
Do we have the original application here, or is it...
It was by, uh, a woman named Dana. I forget the name of her company.
I have all the plans from the original.
That's the, that's the original application, right. That's the one we did the review over. So that's the one that we voted on to approve. Now what, Mr....
No, that's, that's, yeah, that's not gonna work.
Mr. Johann has a completely different dock than what we approved.
Yeah, that has to...
It's too close to the property line, and we, you know, it's...
Because you're the property manager, Mr. Johann, you're...
I'm just the project manager for the, no one's living there. I mean, it's the house under construction.
Right, well, they're gonna have to continue on with their under-construction part, because that has to move.
That, it, that's not where that dock is. If you look on the survey, the dock is...
Well, that's what you're giving us, though.
No, this, this is what, what we applied.
That's what you applied for, but what, where?
Where's the dock?
And this is where the dock is. It's off, that's right where it is. It's closer to the road, not close to the property line.
What's that? What's that?
That was the initial, that was before it was moved.
So you, you have to give us an up-to-date survey?
Uh, update the survey.
Update the survey exactly where the dock is.
An as-built survey.
Yes, that's right.
It's an as-built anyway now, because I'm past the deadline.
Right, you're right. We need an as-built survey.
Just an as-built survey, I should, like, can get back on that list to come, that's all you need.
Yep. We need to see exactly where the stock is and compare it to what we permitted, and that would...
What's the day, what's the date of that plan?
And is it, is it...
Which dock is it, which dock is built there? That one. But where did this come from?
Old survey, old plan.
That must have been from the, that could have come from when you initially put it in before it was changed.
Okay, so you, you came to the board with this original plan, and we...
Adjusted it.
Adjusted it to conform to our regulations.
That's correct, and that's where it is now.
Okay.
You submitted this survey, though, for this application.
So we submitted the wrong survey?
So we just need an updated survey showing exactly where you put the dock, where you put the dock.
So you gave, you gave us the wrong survey with this application?
It's, this is the one, right?
Well, but we have this in our files.
Those are the plans.
This is old. This is 21.
Yeah, no, I don't...
We need an updated survey.
Also, just to, can I just get this one that was done when we, by the surveyors? You need one, like, what's the date?
We need an, we need an, you should provide us an updated survey, showing us what the conditions are now.
Yeah.
That way be sure what's going on here, because there's confusion, unfortunately.
Everything we're looking at is 2021, survey and plans.
Okay, so, yeah.
Just an as-built, that's fine.
That'd be, that'd be, that's a lot easier. That's a lot easier to hear.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because that's where we were going.
Yeah, okay.
We wanted to rip it out.
Well, that would show the dock would comply to our regulations, so then we could move forward approving it.
Right.
This is the current location.
Because that other thing was not happening.
All right, no, not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Gannet Creek, 42 Beach and Yacht Association, 42 North Drive, Village of North Haven, Costilla Marine. So this is, um, good morning.
Good morning.
This is the bulkheading on the east side of the entrance to Gannet Creek that we just approved, um, and...
No, we approved the west side.
Well, that's the west side. We just did the west side, so this is the other side.
Okay, so they're gonna come back with a notice? Okay.
Right, so to remove and replace, uh, the 60-foot offshore section, um, plant Spartina and construct a 24-foot bulkhead return extension. Is there anything else you want to add?
No, I think, um, I think it's a pretty easy concept. I mean, the offshore end is, it's time to repair. I mean, it's been repaired. It's time to do a full replacement of that 60 feet, and then, um, on the back end, it's pretty evident that the bulkhead return is being scoured out, undermined it, and, uh, so we have to do a slight extension to the bulkhead return. We'll fill it, and then we're doing also plantings to kind of soften that corner out a little bit.
So this shows the section here and the additional return as well. James, can you pull up, um, not that one, but the one that shows?
That shows, this shows right here. See where it's getting outflanked here?
It show, go that way, so, yeah. So we can see where it shows on the back end, there's the, yep, go that way a little bit again. So it shows the 24 feet additional return as well. There's a fair amount of water that moves through there.
Yep.
And there's quite a bit of scouring that takes place.
How about put a low sill bulk in there and do, that way we don't have no net loss of wetlands.
Yeah, so I would, that's right, just Scott.
You keep adding it, and you do a low, if you do a step-down low sill and big wedge behind it, it...
It'll take the surge better.
Yeah.
Take that overwash better.
And then let it go, let it come back.
Yeah, because then you'd have a neck gain, because right now, the, the high tide mark is, looks like 10 feet or more behind the bulkhead.
Yep.
So by putting a bulkhead there, we'd be having a net loss of wetlands. Having a low sill bulkhead there, you, we get, we claim that as natural wetlands and have a net gain of wetlands.
I think this area does make more sense for a project like this.
And...
It does, but I think the fear is that you're gonna keep scouring out more and more.
Not if you plant it.
It, yeah, if you, if you, if you, I think if you, if you get the, the elevation correctly, it, it should work out. I mean, we've used these things in other areas, and it has worked out.
I think if you went parallel with the shoreline, it would work out better.
You can't...
I think because you're coming out on this angle, and that, that's why we're gonna do plantings in front and soften it, soften out that curve ideally. I mean, and they didn't want to make this commitment, but I think the whole shoreline there could be replanted, in a sense.
I think it makes more sense.
As you go further down, I think people walk, there's a lot of foot traffic bringing, and, um...
I don't see the DEC allowing us to extend that return, and is this Spartina in the water there? You'd be covering up that grass.
I have DEC on my core end department.
They, they're going to allow you to cover up a wetland?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not in favor of it, so I can, that's my personal opinion. This place already has compromised water quality. We've worked with the harbor committee on trying to upgrade it, getting dredging projects done in there, and new bulkheads for you all, so I think this, you should give a little bit back to the environment.
Okay, but no problem with the offshore end? Because really, the offshore is our big concern right now.
Well, that, that's where the filling, and, you know, and if that breaks down like it did on the west side, then you're gonna have constant filling through the holes in the bulkhead.
Okay, so if I modify the plans, um, just taking that back end out and just doing the in kind in-place replacement of the offshore end, just so I can keep that part moving, I don't want anything to happen to that jetty part.
No, we don't either, because we just spent about 10 years...
Let me just move on with that, and I'll do a separate application for that back side.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that okay?
Or just replace the existing return and leave off the extension?
There's nothing wrong with the existing...
It's a brand-new bulkhead.
Yeah, so, you know, even if we replace it, it would have to be extended.
Okay.
They're just trying to shore up the next 50 feet.
Right.
And it does have, it does have, you know, Spartina there, so I don't see filling that in and making it a...
I'm surprised they, they gave a permit based on other applications that we've worked on.
I mean, that's actual grass there, like Spartina grass, I mean, it's not, you know.
I mean, if you soften it up with a low sill and some rocks and some plants, it'd be nice.
Yeah, it would be, and it would, and when you get the surge coming in, because now that you're dredging the channel out and making it wider again, you're gonna get more of a wave surge in there.
Yeah.
So.
I agree, yeah.
And with the low sill bulkhead and the plantings, it would be a natural, uh, more of a natural shoreline.
Okay, so that's what I'm gonna do. I'll, I'm gonna take that off of the project at this point, and then I'll do a whole nother.
So you leave the sound side and take the creeks out?
Yeah, because I just really want to get moving with that, because I've gone through the DEC on according to Department of State, so it's you guys, and then the village, I still have to go through. And, uh, we would love to get this work done, especially, I think they're anticipating dredging momentarily.
Well, if you have both sides of the jetty repaired, it should give you ten years between dredgings. That, that's been the whole issue.
That's been the problem, yeah, but now that the west side is complete, the west side was a real problem with that dredging.
This side has been pretty good.
You could drive a truck through that hole.
I know, but now that it's repaired, this side, the east side looks real bad.
Well, that's what happens. All right, then do it in stages, but, you know, I, I like to see the best environmental project done there fossil, because, you know, the harbor committee was before us with the water quality, and I know it was downgraded for, uh, you know, shellfishing and, you know. So we would like to make all these projects as environmentally sound as possible.
Do you want the hard copies of the DEC?
That would be helpful, definitely.
Well, we have them.
You have them, you're good?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thirty-five Dune Road, Bridgehampton, Dune Road Holdings LLC. James, there was a survey that was sent in? Uh, sorry, Charlotte?
I put it in there.
You did? Okay, good. Okay, so this is, um, snow fence application, um, to, thanks, Charlotte, um, to protect the dunes on the east side of Meecocks Cut on Dune Road. Um, it's about three hundred feet of snow fence in a zigzag formation, um, as has been done. We requested a survey, um, showing the toe of the dune.
That's sixteen, that's an old one.
Um.
It's too old. Oh, that's the average.
What's that?
We're looking at the survey that's here.
The survey, thanks.
Yeah, the survey was given.
Yes, the top of the dune.
This is fifty, twenty-one.
Here's the bottom of the dune.
This is twenty-one.
What's this dimension here?
That's the average high water of February sixteen.
No, I see, but what's this, what's the dimension?
The distance, yeah. Um, what is the distance between the proposed, uh, snow fencing and the mean high water, the current mean high water?
Looks really
We had requested that be updated on the survey, and we had not received.
That's
I, I spoke to the owners, they were out of town, uh, Thursday or Friday. This is what was sent to us, so there's no
We need to know that.
Because looking at this picture that they furnished us, the, looks like the rack line is almost up to the grass and the snow fencing that is currently here, so if they extend it out further
We're gonna have no access.
No, four-by-four axis.
That's why we requested an updated, uh, survey.
Yeah.
This looks like it's going out, they want to go, we, we need more information.
Yeah.
This is, this is, looks like it's going way far, way far into the, uh
Right here, the, the rack lines right here.
I see that, and, and this is all looking pretty good, all up in here, so now we want to go where?
No, you, you don't want to put it out like, you want to keep
That's the, was intended to be to the
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's
So this survey shows toe of the dune.
Yeah, but it's two thousand and twenty-one.
Oh, okay.
And then look at this measurement from here to, to here.
Okay.
What is that?
Okay. All right, there was
We don't know if it's a building beach or a narrowing beach, so.
We'll circle back around with them, there was some illness in the family, so
We'll hold that.
Struggling with this. So James, you have notes on that then, so that we can go back around to them?
Yeah, just hold, hold it, we need to update the survey to the mean high water and
Updated survey.
Yeah, we need to update the dimension.
And the dimension from the proposed fencing to the mean high water.
Exactly.
And to the toe of the dune.
And to the toe of the dune, yes.
Yeah, look at that.
Okay, fifty-nine Pine Neck Avenue, fifty-nine Pine Neck. So this is an interesting situation. This is a masonry bulkhead, and they're requesting to repair the cracks and chipped concrete in this older bulkhead. The bulkhead was probably built in the
Forties?
Forties, right, when the house was built.
It might have been a retained wall up back then.
Yeah, retaining slash bulkhead.
Yeah.
So it, it's on, um, Mill Creek.
How can they repair it?
They just want to fill in the, uh, chips.
So it's not gonna be any further seaward than it currently is, it's gonna be right in, you know, just basically putting stucco over what's there now.
They're not changing anything.
They're just gonna fill in the cracks.
Yeah, I'm familiar with this property.
What's the, the, you have the cover sheet there?
Mm-hmm, masonry bulkhead, thirty-five feet long by five feet high with built-in stairs, repair of cracks and chipped concrete.
So they're just gonna parge it?
Right. They're just gonna what?
Parge it.
Okay, fix it.
Put a new facade on it.
Yeah, I guess that's okay.
Yeah.
Is it structurally sound as it is?
It looks like it.
It seems that it's built back in the day when they
There's a new bulkhead on the south and a new bulkhead on the north, so it's, it's one in between, so. I mean, it looks like it's not sagging or leaning towards the bay or anything, so it's completely vertical, so, yeah.
So advance this, is there any special language that needs to go with this, being that it's not something that we usually do?
Well, any disturbance in the tidal wetlands, if, if they take the grass and they crush it or kill it or remove it, it should be revegetated there. I mean, because you, you're gonna have equipment down there, you know, and people down there walking on all of that grass, and they're gonna, they're gonna pull it away from the wall as it currently is to work on it, so maybe a re-vedge in front of the, you know, right, like, five feet in front of the, uh, current wall there, so they'll maintain the wetlands there.
Okay.
What do you think, Mark?
Yeah, I mean, you mentioning wetlands, are we, is there any interest in getting any kind of letter from the Con Board, or are we outside?
It's on the other side, it's on the other side of it.
Then no, I think it would be, seems like it would be a minor disturbance then.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the wetlands is maintained and it's not destroyed.
And we don't have anything like this in the blueprint, so I just want to make sure we hit everything.
Yeah.
Eyes crossed.
So you just need stand plans and then a cover sheet with the language about the re-vedge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Good, thank you.
That's all I have.
To you.
Hallick W Culver, Six Beaver Dam Road, West Hampton. Come on up.
Sit down, sign in. Morning. Morning. Get your names for the record, sign in. Thank you. We'll get right down to business for you.
I'm Daniel Culver, my sister Lauren Culver Barlow. And, uh, we have a bulkhead that we, uh, want to repair, one that had, had been there, it's been there for a long time. My father has owned the property for quite a long time, back to the nineteen fifties, when we were all young, or at least I was all young, a lot of younger people here. And I can remember going out in our boats in it. And I, I, well, I have, uh, some notes here, that is an update, may I, I only have five copies, I didn't realize there might be so many of you.
Five, just be
Give us one.
Attorney, I mean, our, our manager, office manager over there, she can stamp them in, or stamp them so that
Yeah, so, my brother Wayne, who cannot be here today, is the one who wrote this up. He's the, uh, project designer, he is a civil engineer, he's licensed, hit number two, it gives his credentials. Uh, he is the author of all these plans. Uh, he has a lot of experience with various things, probably more than many of the people that you see in this position. He's built, he's done the work on the Quogue Bridge upgrade, uh, he was the main engineer there.
I think we're in Southampton, too, on thirty-nine, something, he's been a road
Yeah, he's been a
He has to account.
He, while he may not be, uh, have had to come to Southampton to apply for permits, he certainly gets it through New York State and Suffolk County, uh, and so Wayne is a, he lives in Smithtown by me.
So let me ask you a question. So you have, relative to the site work on number seven, that you want to get rid of the fragmites, which is okay, but you, you say you intend to seed it with grass, what type of grass are we talking about, here, beech grass?
Whatever you would desire, actually.
Probably Cape American beech grass or, or Spartina, something like that.
You know, we're, we're near, uh, another part of Southampton Town's Beaver Dam Marina.
Yes.
And they have grass there.
Well, they have regular grass.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying? Or they have beech grass?
You know, I don't, it's not beech grass, it doesn't appear to be.
They have grass right up to the bulkhead.
Yeah, so we don't, we, we, we beat to a bit of a different drum, you know.
What sort of grass did you like?
We're looking for, we're looking for, yeah, native, deep-rooted species, which is what you want, because it adds, as your, your brother or whatever, you're saying. Brothers, the engineer, would probably understand that, you know, for the structural integrity, uh, of the project, it would be best served with deep-rooted native vegetation versus, you know, shallow-rooted grass, which could cause it to be undermined or overwashed and
Grass that would work in the marine environment, where you get overtopping and flooding, so
Right.
That's what you'd ask him, that type of
This would only be within ten feet of the bulkhead.
Yeah.
Within ten feet.
Right.
Yes. That's our jurisdiction.
But what's, within ten feet, what do you want?
That's what we're talking about.
That's what we're talking about.
That's our jurisdiction. Then you have
Then you can
Different
After that, then you would have to apply to the conservation board if you're gonna do something different upland after the ten feet.
That's not our jurisdiction, we're only gonna deal with the ten feet.
Oh, so you're with, just within ten feet?
Ten feet. It's a different jurisdiction.
Two different
And then feet of the whole bulkhead.
Yes.
And beyond that, there's the conservation board.
Conservation board.
So are you doing any upland activities to this property? Right, so you're just staying, you're just dealing with the bulkhead right now?
We, we, we want to do the bulkhead, we would like to, you know, Southampton Town Beaver Dam Marina looks very nice, we'd like
Overhead shock.
Nice, like, like them.
Right, no, but we're, we're just dealing with what's in our jurisdiction right now, so that would be the bulkhead and the ten feet. So for the grass, because you're indicating grass, we just need to specify the fact we're going for native vegetative grass, like Cape American beech grass, not other types of grass that need fertilizer and everything else, that's not what we do.
Is there any other, anything else that we might use, a, um, paver?
The house might be across the street.
Because it's a very tiny area there, you could put pavers there, you could put
The, the object is with the grass is that the deep-rooted, because your plan is indicating grass, and the grass is, is a good idea. It's a better idea, it's just that you have to use the right species of grass for it to actually work out for what you're trying to do and what we're trying to do. So he's, he's in the right direction with grass, you just have to specify.
Is that what Southampton Town is using to?
We, we, as I said, we, we beat to a different drum.
This is the survey? Each application we come in, whether it's fifty years old, the property, and have issues, we try to bring everything up to current standards as far as our blueprint regulations. So you're coming in for a bulkhead replacement that was done in the fifties, what was done in the fifties and allowed in the fifties is completely different than what we do now, so we're bringing your property up to our standards in two thousand and twenty-three.
So you're looking to come up nine inches to match the southern bulkhead, is what you're looking, he's looking to do, um, according to this application? Trusty Parish?
Oh, like, seven inches, he says point, point, oh, point eight feet.
Says nine inches higher than the existing bulkhead to match the tie into the existing bulkhead and walkway on the south. That's what the narrative that he has given us.
And the application says point eight feet, which is close to the seven inches, okay.
All right, so what is the differential of, uh, the project to the adjoining to the south?
Nine inches, it's like, here.
Nine inches.
Four point eight feet.
He's got a proxy here. Yeah, so you can't pull that stuff out and then just put regular grass there, it's gotta be, it's gotta be native vegetation grass.
Yeah, that's right.
Otherwise you'll, that's not gonna work.
You have a great buffer around your bulkhead, you have a little slip there.
What, what are you saying?
You have a nice buff, you have a nice buffer.
With the plantings.
With the plant, with the natural grasses and stuff like that.
I mean, it's a shramzel bush, it's a shame to mess with all this stuff.
I know, but they're gonna need it to take out
I know, but, I get it, but he's, he's actually talking about
They hand-cut that, they're not able to save a lot of other stuff.
If he's, they want to locate heavy equipment, uh, to the west or on barges in the water.
I think your best bet would be from a barge.
I think, I was just gonna say the exact same thing, they're better off working from a barge.
And then hand-cut the fragmites in the area of the groundsel.
I think they think ought to not disturb as much of that native stuff as possible.
Now, what is, that's disturb, you want to worry about being disturbed, there's only fragmites there.
On the other side.
On the other side, on the north side, it's all groundsel bushes, which is a natural bush that's around the marine environment. It's native.
Live in a saltwater, live in a freshwater.
What's the name of it?
Groundsel, like
And you get a, you, you get a list from James, he'll give you a list of native plants.
Yeah.
Where you could plant around there.
Yeah, I mean, that's
Because if you hand-cut, um
You can dig up and replant it.
And I block that stuff out.
So on the, on the south side, take all the fragmites down?
Yep.
You know, I think some of it is on Southampton Town's side, too.
Oh, you have a survey, what's the survey? We're only gonna deal with your property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and then we're gonna go up to Southampton Town's side, which leaves some fragmites, well, would you want the fragmites to be the basic species?
Again, we only can talk within ten feet of the boat, of your boat's left.
Is there anybody you would talk to about?
The conservation board?
The conservation board.
Or just consult with Marty, you wouldn't necessarily go to conservation board, because you're not asking for relief, I would speak to the environment division, get their advice of what administratively they think, but in dealing with what we're gonna deal with, um, bulkhead replacing, reasonable increase, uh, limited disturbance to native vegetation that's existing, and if we're gonna deal with fragmites uh, and plant grass as indicated, it's gonna have to be a native vegetative grass.
And Marty's last name is?
Shay.
You know him? Okay. All right.
And then you could get a nice project out of it.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, most of the bushes on the north side could be hand dug out, saved, and then replanted.
You hand dig the, uh-huh.
Yeah, I mean, the groundsel bushes, yeah, I mean, there's no sense of getting rid of them.
No, you're
Putting it to rebuy it.
Right?
Yeah, just put it off the side.
So where are we?
Wouldn't that be better off to be, uh, be native grass there?
Well, these are In place of the fragmites, for sure. But not on the other side, though, because you have native vegetation that's already there.
It's nice and stable.
It's doing its job, it's protecting your property.
It's flourishing on the property.
You're gonna hurt yourself.
As it is right now, other than the bulkhead tilting over, the vegetation is flourishing, and it's a native vegetation, it's a native shrub that lives around the marine environment.
It's blocking out the other stuff that's coming up.
Yeah, you don't want to hurt that.
Can you pull up the photos, James?
So there's only two and a half, the three feet that is ours, anyway. I don't know if all those bushes are, um
Just take out that amount.
Are, are here, it's this here, this picture here, I guess you're looking at.
So I pulled, we, we pulled it up on the overheads, James.
There, see, there you go.
There, so on that right side of the boat, that's groundsel that, that we're referring to.
So, on that, on, around the perimeter of the dugout slip, how much actual land is on each
It's like two and a half feet, three feet.
So, so when you replace this, you're not gonna be able to put a traditional lay log and dead man system, because you're gonna need to put, you know, uh, vertical, like, helical pilings or vertical pilings close to each other. And I mean, it's not gonna be like a traditional bulkhead where you excavate ten or fifteen feet behind, and then you put lay logs and dead men behind them with tie rods, this is gonna be, uh
He's indicating that.
It's indicating, he's
Yeah, he's saying it's designed with piles for lateral support instead of tiebacks, so as to not approach on adjoining properties, so he's, he's, he's you know, he's an engineer, he's, he's, he's kind of got it dialed in on that, but I think where there needs to be clarification is relative to the native vegetation around the structure itself, that's where I think there's a disconnect. He's indicating grass, which is good, but you, like I said, we gotta specify the grass, and then we gotta do, you know, as minimal disturbance to the existing wetland vegetation as possible, that benefits the environment, it also benefits your property.
So, so you're really not gonna need much disturbance, other than pulling the bulkhead up and replacing, it's gonna be a pole and sections. Um, and then you'd have like a, you're asking for a two-and-a-half-foot capping, I believe, what, what's it? James, what's? Twenty-four inches.
So two, two-foot capping is the max.
It's two-foot capping, on top Two foot capping, on top of the corrugated bulkhead would give you a nice walkway all around there. And basically, you'd be leaving the whole upland part of it there.
So that's gotta be amended.
And this should be amended.
Yeah, that, it's gotta get amended on the, on that capping to two feet from two five, and on number seven, where you've got site work, we've gotta specify the grasses, we've gotta, um.
Will be replaced with, yes.
Native vegetation.
Native vegetation.
Or native grass.
Native vegetation or Cape American beach grass.
And, and the driveway in that part of it is out of our jurisdiction, so that would be, you know.
Yeah, Marty's chef.
The plan needs to be more specific of where you're cutting the frag or revegetating.
Re-vege plan.
Right.
Because there are limits, cause of the restrained lot.
So how do we go about doing that part of it? Go to conservation?
No, I think you're gonna have to work with somebody, it's in our jurisdiction, but you're gonna have to have somebody craft a vegetation plan. Maybe your brother has knows somebody, or he can do it, he has to craft a plan, and as he's making, uh, making these modifications to this permit, so we can get to the next step, he's gonna have to indicate, you know.
A revetigation plan.
Right, where he's pulling the fragmites out, and a list of what native vegetative species he's putting in.
So you need that before.
It's gotta be part of this application.
Part of the application.
Can we, will that be able to be delivered as to in writing, so?
Yeah, I mean, you could, James could spell that out for you, he could spell it out for you, if you give a call.
Can we can get, get back with you then?
Yeah. Just, did you put your contact information and email down there? So, yeah, then we could just, and then James can just email you the information back and forth.
Correct.
So they don't have to wait on.
I have your email, it's dancolver77@gmail.com.
Yes, that's it.
So I'll email you what you need to give us.
Thank you, James.
Okay, thank you, James.
You're welcome.
Do we need to check with them about the conservation board, obviously before we do anything?
Not, no, not really, no, because you're not dealing in that jurisdiction, you're, you're dealing in our jurisdiction, okay, don't wanna confuse the issue.
There's a lot more land there.
No, we're staying in, in our jurisdiction, so we're gonna, we're gonna deal with it right here, right now, because it's our jurisdiction, but it has to be, it has to be native vegetation. And, and we have to get specifics on what is going on there, um, it's, it's for everybody's benefit.
So, um, you don't want any construction access on the south side?
Probably be better to handle this from the barge, as he's indicating.
Is that very doable, James, to have a barge?
It should be.
That's what a lot of people do.
That's what a lot of people do.
I mean, it says in your, in your proposal by barge.
Okay. That's what he's indicating.
Like the.
Yeah, they pull out the old bulkhead, put it on the barge, and then they use the barge to reconstruct the new bulkhead, it's, you know.
Yeah, because you don't wanna.
It's common.
Yes.
Okay. There's, there's not enough room on either side for a piece of machinery, like an excavator or a machine to work. You only have two or three feet, so there's not enough room there, so it would be practical, most practical to do it by the water or a barge.
When, when everything's all done and said, though, the fragmites, it'd be nice if it was all gone, would?
You just need a vegetation plan, but you need to, you need to, um, show us.
What are you gonna put in place?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, that, that has to be in the plan, so. Otherwise, it's just gonna make a mess.
Um, and we would like, number five, we talked about dredging on the west side, to make it a little bit deeper.
Let's call it reclaiming.
Well, what, what, we need, we need to see, you have a plan showing us exactly what, we need to see that on a plan, how many cubic yards, where the dredge oil's gonna go, did you apply to the DEC for, you know.
Does it chill on there, James?
Is there, is there, on the application somewhere?
You know, we, we did get a response from the DEC, uh, and, and they, they seem like they're, they, they don't care. Yeah, I can show you.
Well, I mean, if you're gonna do, if you're gonna do reformation dredging, just taking the material, and you're raising up the bulkhead, normally, you put that material around your project, your, your bulkhead project, and that material raises it up for you. But I'm assuming the material's gonna be very, uh, silty and organic, and so, so it might off, might, you might need to truck, de-water it and truck it offsite, so you need to see what kind of material you're gonna be talking about removing, and how much, show us on a, on a plan, how much you're gonna remove, how many cubic yards.
That's all could be known ahead of time?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can do a course.
Yeah, your brother or brother-in-law or whoever, the engineer, he could, he could calculate that out and put it on the application.
There's nothing in the plans about dredging or.
This is just a general, these are just a general permit terms, this is not a specific, this is just a general.
That's right, and, and so it, it occurs to me that, that would, anything that we do do, they're gonna have the same response, that's, as far as the DEC does.
I would never assume anything with the DEC, I think, yeah, you're gonna get in trouble, and, and the bottom line is that, when it rolls into our jurisdiction, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna be, um, a lot more, uh, specific towards, um, what's, what's exactly going on, and we're also gonna pay a lot careful, more careful attention to adjoining property, effects on adjoining property. Um, and they know that, they know that, they leave it for us to do, uh, as a home rule over here, to, to get this to where the project works for you, but doesn't create any other adverse impacts to the adjoining environment or property, and that's why we're, we're being so specific. It does benefit you and everybody else, so.
Uh, sure, so we, we just, at the time we do this amendment, we'll also include the DEC.
Yes, okay. Okay, so we got some work to do, we're making progress.
I will, I look forward to talking to James and getting some details, and, uh, I guess resubmitting the application.
James, um, the.
Scott, can you hand over the?
Application, is it solely on their property, it's a cutout, uh, canal, is it, it's not, we have the survey.
Yeah, it's, it's on their property, it's just, it's tight, it's, um.
Yeah, the, the charge for the dredging would be, there wouldn't be a charge.
Oh, no, yeah, there's no, there's no see why, we have the permit, it will weigh the fee on a cubic yard dredge amount.
Because it's your, your own property.
What?
Yeah, because internal, internal.
Again, we don't have any dredging on the plane, so.
We have to get that on there.
Yep.
Alright, we got a little work to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
You too.
See you again.
Next is R R R C B L T D forty-two Dock Road, Remsenberg's Beyond.
How are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chuck. How are you? This is Remsenberg Marina, you know, I think we're all probably very familiar with it.
Yep.
It's a hundred and sixty-one feet of bulkhead that they are reconstructing in place. Also, a four foot wide walkway that is there, they're reconstructing that, a hundred and sixty-one by four feet. One of their sheds and ice dispenser, I guess you'd call it, uh, they need to replace the concrete pads underneath them, so they'll take them off, put a new pad in, and then put them back. Uh, they're also doing the gas tanks, but I think that's beyond the ten foot jurisdiction, so. Pretty simple, untreated lumber are for everything, and, uh, you know, basically, uh, this is a section that really needs, really needs to be done.
And John, what, what, where the travel at this?
Uh, they're doing it, uh, no, they're stopping where the, where the travel starts. They're just doing the, from the, basically, the, uh, ice machine, uh.
Can you go back overhead?
So is it just a straight?
Yeah.
A straight shot, an east-west straight shot?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, they're really just replacing, they're just reconstructing this there.
They're doing with that float sticking out?
Uh, yes, where that, yes.
On the other side?
Well, no, they were basically, the stern of the boat there, that's where it's about, where it's starting.
Okay.
Right there, yeah. And then going, then, then going, it's, it's not going into the travel.
Okay.
And then going a hundred and sixty-one feet, and you can see the walkway's already there, uh, that's gonna be reconstructed. Everything with non-treated lumber, and the bulkhead's gonna be vinyl sheet pile, uh, with green heart piles. And you can see the ice shed there, uh, or the ice machine and, uh, the shed, which is right next to it. So they just wanna pick those up, move them off, replace the pads and put them back.
What about a buffer?
It's all grass.
It's all.
Yeah, you know, it's.
Don't they store boats there during the winter time?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yep.
So you really can't put any.
No, I, no, you know, they, they do have a lot of buffer and vegetation, uh, over on the south side. You know, that's where the beach and all the natural vegetation is.
We're familiar with that erosion problem.
Just a patch.
I don't see any problems.
Okay.
I have, uh, concerns just about the ice shed and the, the shed and the ice shed. Um, it, it's not attached to the bulkhead, would it be trustee jurisdiction?
What's the, what's the distance?
I know it's within the ten feet, but it's not, uh.
Well, that's why we applied for it, you know, uh, normally, it's just the walkway and the bulkhead, because the walkway's attached to the bulkhead, but.
Yeah, I would, I would say put the ice machine in the, uh, any cement pad, if it's not attached to one of our structures, that it's attached to the water, we should probably take it off.
Take it off.
The only question you have there is the cement pad is in, within the ten feet.
Well, there's gonna be disturbance, you know.
That's the thing, it's gonna get disturbed beyond itself.
You're gonna have to break up.
It's probably, you could, if you could regulate it and assure, like, like Andy was saying about buffer. At least you know you're gonna just get what you had there, not anything greater.
No, they, they weren't planning on anything.
Right, I understand, but we permit it.
Right.
Okay.
She wanna permit the, the slab and within the ten feet.
We could, we could go that route.
I think it's bigger than ten feet though, isn't it? What, what are the dimensions?
It's, it's, it's existing, right, it's just, it's just a reconstruction of an existing pad.
So it's not.
Of course.
Yeah, it's, it's within the ten feet of the boundary.
Yeah, that, that's why we included it.
Right, it seems as though it's not, you know. It's not a terrible thing, it is within, where you are gonna have disturbance, you could have disturbance, so I, I guess putting the cards on the table to assure that.
Put down a word that we permitted the slab there, within the ten feet.
And that, and that, and nothing more than that, what is already existing.
It'd be just like a Jackson's Marina, Scott, with all the stuff that's there, we've permitted.
Exactly, so let it go then.
Alright, no, I, I just think it's, cause they're gonna have to break it up, you know.
Yeah.
I, I hear what you're saying, James, but I think based on the disturb pot, potential for disturbance in the area that the trustees generally regulate, I think it makes more sense.
If the slabs are broken up, they'd be trucked out and I'll put on a beach.
Oh.
That's where usually, no, I don't, no.
Place goes back a long way.
No, no.
There's enough stuff over there.
Trusty Parish.
I'm, I'm gonna advance it.
Okay, thanks, guys.
So just, wait one second, to be clear, so Mark, your question was that the structures are out, the two structures, the ice machine and the shed are outside of trustee jurisdiction, but the pad.
No, they are, well, they're, they're on the pad, you know, they're just a little, so they're getting picked up.
They are within our jurisdiction.
The only issue is I don't believe it's in your blue book as something you review, I don't, I don't, it's not, I can't find it anywhere in there.
Potential for wetland jurisdiction.
Just wanna make sure it goes correctly for Mr. Bowman.
Potential for wetland disturbance in that ten foot zone.
Oh, for sure.
Right, and that's what he's concerned is, he could be, he could be disturbing the wetland within that ten foot zone, which is trustee's jurisdiction.
So that it's locked tight, it might be good to look into, it may be something that the town would, would permit. I don't know if the, the trustees can, it's the only issue, I understand.
I don't think the town would, would be involved, cause they're gonna tell us it's within ten feet.
Right. And they generally.
Right, it's just not a, it being, it not being attached to the bulkhead is my only.
Pour a slab on your property, a ten by ten slab of concrete on a property to place your shed on, would you have to go for a permit if the shed is conforming?
No, build, no.
There's no, there's no requirement for that, so there's no requirement, but what he's doing is, because of the fact, there's potential for wetland disturbance in the jurisdiction of the trustees, he's coming to us and saying, I could be disturbing your property.
That's why we, you know, put it on the DEC permit, because, you know.
Right, he's trying to be.
No, I understand.
But, but.
For other ports down the road, where, you know, we have to look at this in thirty years, that we allow it, that two slab on there. I'm not worried about the voltage, just the slabs.
Oh, yeah, oh, the only reason, we gotta have a machine down there to break it up, so, and then, you're right, they have to take it away.
Where are you at, where are we at with this, trustee parish?
He said, go ahead.
Okay.
So what are we, what are we charging for that, cause you don't have a, uh.
I don't think we are.
We charge a square foot, or we do it for a deck, that would be my thought.
So charge it under a deck?
Yeah, it'd be just like a square foot of a deck, it's, it's a footprint within our jurisdiction. It'd be just, just like the boat houses that we charge and, and the decks and stuff like that, right? That, that's the way I would calculate it, if it's twen, if it's ten by ten, it's a hundred square feet and whatever the going rate is.
That's fine.
Do you have another suggestion, James?
No, I just, um, we don't have something that's in there, so, just asking.
Alright, I mean, that's, that's fine, you charge, charge for that, that's great.
It's gonna just show up on the invoices deck instead of concrete slab, so.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
Congrats.
And we do have.
Congratulations to you, I'm sure I'll be seeing you. Congratulations, everybody was leaving and, you know, and the ones who were staying, so.
Couple was staying, everybody's, kind of, doing their better aspirations.
Yeah, that's okay.
Alright, alright, thanks, Chuck.
They said they're gonna invite us back to the pizza party.
Oh, you think?
We have to buy.
Exactly.
Have a great day.
We want toppings too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks.
Next we have, uh.
First Coastal Corp for thirty-six Cedar Lane, Remsenberg.
Morning, everybody.
Hey, Bill.
Good morning, Mr. Mack.
How are you, man? Very good, very good.
You want time today?
How much time?
Only to do the last one call.
Yeah, right?
That's where we put your last one.
He knew he was last.
Billy Mack, First Coastal, for the applicant, um, this is thirty-six Cedar Lane. This property is one of the few properties on, uh, this creek that doesn't have a dock, and we're looking to apply for a seventy-seven feet off of the, uh, high water. And it. Forty-one feet into mean low, into the creek. It's an elevated catwalk with a three by twelve ramp and a six by twenty float, appears all blue book compliant.
Plenty of water?
Yeah, there's deep water there, right at, right at, um, we get, we make the two and a half feet.
Plenty of width on there, water width?
Yeah, plenty of width. It's two hundred and fifty feet.
And what are we off, what are we off the adjoining property line?
Uh, we are seventeen feet.
Sounds like it's compliant.
Yeah.
And this is a vacant lot?
It's, I, I believe, it's, right now, it's a vacant lot.
According to our two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah. There's a, uh, application for a house under construction with Marty's office.
We have a letter from the, uh, conservation board.
Says?
Based upon October thirty, two thousand twenty-three field assessment, the routing of the proposed elevated catwalk and pedestrian access path can be supported, so long as every effort is made to minimize cutting of tidal wetland cord grasses, ground, groundsel bush, and forest vegetative, vegetative cover. The construction details call for the installation of a light penetrable deck, cat, deck catwalk supported by untreated posts, The construction details call for the installation of a light penetrable deck, cat, deck catwalks supported by untreated posts, and thus, thus are consistent with the conservation board standards.
Okay.
Sounds like a good to go.
Sounds supportive.
Okay.
Are you good with it, Bill?
Uh, thank you, guys.
All right, James?
Yes.
I got a bonus for you.
I don't, we just need, uh.
Stamp plan.
Stamp plan.
Stamp plan, that's right.
I have a, I have a bonus for you just to get you a little.
Yes.
Boosted ahead.
Yes, please.
I was standing, you, you're thirty-two Sunset, is that you?
Uh, thirty-two Sunset. I believe so. I don't know. I'd have to look it up.
Let's take a look here.
In West Hampton.
Yeah, look it up, see if you're thirty-two Sunset and he's quag.
Yeah, and he's quag.
He's quag?
Uh, yes. You are, okay, so I would. Yeah, I know what that property is. You do? Okay, now that you're remembering. So, uh, just to save you a step.
Mm-hmm.
Go back to the client, have a conversation about the elevation, because eighteen is, is too high. Too high.
I mean, there's extensive wetlands behind the bulkhead, right? Take a, you know, this way, instead of you coming back here to work session and coming back down and giving you a bonus here.
I appreciate that.
Well, it's just a man-made boat, so, right?
Yeah.
It's not like it's gonna to pull anything back, pull or a house or something. You, you're just, you're just saving the deep water.
Okay.
Cause you wanna do a hundred and fifty-two feet of existing bulkhead.
Yeah.
Increasing top elevation by eighteen, and then a four-by-twenty-five catwalk, six-by-twenty float in the, in the piles, but the, the, the one fifty-two at eighteen high.
Not gonna do, not gonna work.
Okay. Existing, so is that, it cho, it shows.
It's, it's just, you know what we gotta do? You gotta go back to the drawing board and then let's you and I meet down there.
Yeah, I'm happy to meet.
Can we do that?
Sure.
We got a bunch of things I think we gotta go look at.
Okay.
Um, I think you and I should plan a day, a couple hours, and we go out.
Have a picnic.
We could have a picnic, pizza and toppings.
Cause that's all, that's all natural shoreline.
I'm having breakfast, so I'm starving.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Pizza talk.
Don't talk to Scott then, cause I definitely don't have food.
All right.
Yeah, because that's a standalone.
No, happy to meet.
That's a standalone bulkhead. It's not.
Yeah, it's surrounded by, uh, marsh.
Supporting, and when you.
It's all natural shoreline.
And you put the elevation up, the wave of reverie is gonna completely decimate the wash.
It's just not gonna work, so I figured, let me save you a step.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're getting a holiday bonus here.
I like that.
Yes.
And the next holiday bonus I'd love would be, um, uh, this, uh, Scott and his Marina, when you guys get it.
I know, it was delivered.
Yeah, well, he just gotta look at it. I'm familiar with the place, cause I've been permitting the place for ten years.
To get you, the board members currently that are here, so we can kinda get ahead of this. So anybody that wants.
There's a lot down there, Billy.
There's a lot down there.
And you can't go all the way across to the other side.
Well, that's, we're going a third. Just going a third.
Here's what we're gonna do. A third, but then you're gonna put a fifty-foot bu, boat that's fourteen feet wide there, then.
Nah, nah, it's, it's two hundred and, like, fifteen feet.
I know. I, I was doing the review before Scott was on the board.
Well, eventually, we're gonna have to do, or they're gonna have to do, put a, a limitation. When you have, when you, when you have your poles, how far can the bow stick out from the, from the pole?
Well, we're not, they're not proposing any boats along the outer edge of that line. All the boats are inside that.
Okay.
Third demarcation.
Did you get everything to James and Charlie?
I did. Well, but I know, that was Thursday.
We got them dislocated.
But maybe you could look at it for next time.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I would love to meet you guys even before the eighteenth. So anybody that wants to meet down there.
I've already been down there. I've been down there a million times.
Scott was nice enough to come down, and you're familiar with it.